Okay, call the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:30 PM on Monday, April 22nd, 2019. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. I am the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have an invocation?
And we're all blessed again.
Okay. We do not-
Now it's Andy's turn.
Okay. I need, does everybody have a chat suit? Read over the minutes. I will take that as a yes.
An approval is written.
Second? First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Minutes are approved. We'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
Can we add some additions to the agenda?
Sure.
Mayor, we have 10B, bond sale summary from Todd Hagan's here from Ellers. 10C, Chris Larson talks about accepting bids for the infrastructure improvements. On 12A, the resolution 2019-26 to waive the assessment, we had some additional language added to that one. We can talk about it when we get to that one.
Okay.
And one that's not on the packet in front of you is the addition of 12F, which would be resolution 2019-31, a gambling permit for Southwest Hero's Run.
Alright, so we get a motion to accept the minutes with amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the additions, or the agenda, sorry.
Second? First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, agenda's approved. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest that they know of this evening? Anybody from the public have anything that they want to bring up or talk about that is not on the agenda? We have tonight scheduled a public hearing at 6:45, I believe Bollig was going to speak prior to that?
Yep, they'll have a presentation to go into it, correct? If you'd like to talk before.
Sure, if you'd take the floor, please.
My name is Paul Jurick with Bollig Engineering, and I've brought Angela Home also with Bollig Engineering. And we've been working on the airport for a number of years now. We're currently working on a master plan. And with that, we've been talking about a few different developments out there. Most importantly, what we want to talk about tonight is the runway 0624 closure, and then our apron reconstruction that we'll be doing later this summer. So Angela has some exhibits that we brought along here, and we'll get into that. But recently, there's been some great interest in expanding hangars out at the airport. Right now, there's kind of the old T hangar, and then just a larger hangar that's being used, and it's the board's interest, and then also from the city. And what we're hearing from the airport community is that we want to expand T hangars and hangars at the airport. So it is kind of constrained right now, and there are, like, there's 18 letters of intent to either own or rent a hangar at the airport right now. So that's a pretty high interest in the airport community. So maybe Angela can maybe explain on-
Sure.
-what areas we're looking at and our constraints we have, so.
Can you, are you able to draw on that? I can do that. Can you use, to this one? Should be like maybe the third? One more, there you go. So we did a study, just a quick study, to look at where we could develop hangars in Tracy. This first figure, which is on the screen, and also on this following down easel, are, shows you your three runways that you currently have, and there are certain areas here that are dotted. And those are the areas you could potentially develop a building in. As you can see, because there are three, it's pretty constrained, your development areas are pinched off. If you look at that figure over there, if we were to remove the north-south runway that is 1735, which might be the next slide, thank you, you can see that it changes the options for development. However, it's not necessarily and probably the most beneficial way. You still have more development area, but it's up around the cemetery. And if you instead remove runway 624, should be the next one, that actually shows a much better scenario for hangar development, because it allows development from the base that you already have. Your AD building is in place, it can stay there. Your beacon is in place, it can stay there. All of your electrical that's already there can stay. This runway 0624 has the least, or the poorest wind coverage of any of the runways. Anecdotally, we're told it's getting used the least of any of them, and then when you remove it, it creates the most beneficial contiguous land area that you can follow. So that's our recommendation. And to take that one step further, because there's been such interest, we've been working on some scenarios of hangar development for this newly expanded area. What you see here is some development that you could hopefully expect in the next 20 to 30 years. Oh, thank you. Thank you. So on this particular figure, we've got potential for those 18 owners or renters who would like to base at this airport, plus a potential future medevac facility, and more than enough tie-downs for anything that you could want out here. This wouldn't all happen at once, but it would happen in stages, like the first five years is what's shown here, maybe in the green. Later on, we would add hangars, a T hangar here, and some private hangars here, and then later on, you could build further away. But it's not really possible until you've abandoned a runway. So.
Can you explain what a T hangar is?
It's just the way the hangar is configured, you know, planes are kind of, if you think they're shaped in a T, then they, one is faced one way, the other is faced the other way. And a lot of times, they come in like a unit of like six or eight, or two increments of two generally, is what you see.
Thank you.
So with that, I think what we're asking for, we'll hear public comment at 6:45, and then we would ask the council to make a recommendation on closing that if we don't have too many comments. So we haven't taken the next steps for closing the runway. There's a form that needs, that's filled out, 7480, and it's a request to abandon a runway. And then there's a categorical exclusion that goes with that. So we're waiting for the hearing first, and then upon our hearing, we'll get our comments from that, and then we'll just wait for approval from FAA on both of those documents. And then we're also working with FAA on these drawings with the apron and hangar layouts.
This layout that we have here isn't set in stone, it's just an idea. It's to show what could be done. We've been playing with it, we're on alternative five right now, so we're certainly open to comments and concerns off the way out.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The green area would be like the first, the first step?
Yes.
What is the green area?
Oh, the green buildings, I'm sorry. So these buildings that you see here, this would be a medevac facility, potentially, with a new AD building. Your existing AD building would remain, but would be used for something else that the airport needs. And then right away, we'd want to build some private hangars here, maybe they might move over, and some T hangars, so that the people who are currently based at your airport are not displaced. We want to be sure that we build them places to be before we tear down the existing one, which is in extremely poor condition. And then once that's torn down, and everybody's in a space, then as demand warrants, we can add more hangars. And we would not just build it and hope they come, but we would make sure we have, you know, a waiting list of enough people where it makes economic sense for FAA and MINDOT to help support the building of the hangars.
So in that drawing, where's the present hangar at?
Well, it's actually right, right here, underneath this area.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my visual key in. Understood. That's fine.
And then, of course, up here is the box hangar that currently has two tenants in it right now. And those would stay. Eventually, this hangar could become a maintenance building for the airport, which is something the airport really needs, to store their equipment and their materials and tools. But then the people who are in here now would have a new hangar to be that goes on.
Is our upcoming apron improvement that we're going to be doing here shortly, is this taken into consideration in that, so we don't have to redo that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We're working with the apron you've got and incorporating it into the new plan. Again, this could change a little bit, you can see the existing apron is shown here in this gray. When we reconstruct it this summer, which Paul's going to tell you about, we're going to need to expand it just a little bit, because right now, you're not in compliance with FAA standards for safety. Your taxiway object free area is too narrow. So we've talked to FAA, and they're willing to let us grow that apron a little bit so we can be in compliance.
And our current fueling station is going to remain, and that's not a problem?
Yes.
And as I understand it, some of this, or the runway closure is rather motivated by the FAA, is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that, just to be clear for people at home, that is a grass runway, it's not-
Correct.
-not concrete?
Right.
And 95% of your usage is probably on the paved runway. And just another note on that, there's some visual, safety compliance, things that go with the runway, and removing that gets rid of all those that are not in compliance right now.
And the FAA is really driving that, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Right now, you're, because you have runways that cross like this, you need to be able to see while you're on this runway if someone's coming on this runway. And because of the way the apron is configured and that U line, if you have anything parked on your apron right now, you're not in compliance. So if you remove this runway, that actually takes this blue dash line that says RVZ on it, pushes it out to here, and then you are in compliance again with your apron. So removing that apron improves safety, it allows you to develop hangar spaces that are apparently desperately needed, and it also helps preserve our funding stream from FAA and MINDOT.
Do we need to do anything to the grass runway that we're keeping, or is that all fine in what we're doing?
It's in good condition, there's nothing wrong with it. We do have a couple of obstructions we need to deal with, but that's already been worked on.
Okay, well, it is 6:45. Are you-
I think she explained the apron pretty well, it's just removing and replacing it, and, you know, expanding it that little bit to make it in compliance, so it's not too much more to that, so.
Most people have looked at it, but the biggest thing there is there's a big, like a gully in the middle for waterway, and this project would remove that and direct the water to the east instead of to the middle. There's a lot of risk of drop strike coming around to fuel up with its current design.
That's another safety condition, too, that we leave with the new apron.
At this time, we will open the public hearing and entertain any comments or questions from the public.
Sorry. I didn't pass somebody.
Okay, well, hearing none, we will close the public hearing portion. And move on to council. Is there any discussion?
When are we hoping to start this?
The apron would be in August, it's kind of, we're already, August, September, probably construction. So we'd like to go out for bids here, not shortly, but I don't know, we need authorization. We already kind of went through the grant procedure for accepting, application for that, so now we're, typically, we might ask for bid authorization for the apron.
So would it be done like by Labor Day, or is that going to affect the-
Let me back up a step. We would start right after Labor Day, because you have your boxcar days happening, so that was one, two straight there.
Do we have a possible timeline? I know we've got to get the master plan, unless it looks like it's going to fit in it well, but once that runway, you know, everything gets blessed today, closing that runway is going to happen June, October, you know, guess on that, and if that, once that's done, then we've been approached a couple times of someone who wants to build their own hangar. Would we have a spot, once that runway's closed, so if someone wanted to come in and build their own hangar, they could?
You know, that's kind of what we're showing here?
Yep.
That that area's available.
And then what's the timeline that we're looking at?
This year might be a little aggressive, but there is a time period for this, the things to be approved by FAA, but probably looking maybe at this fall. It just depends on, you know, what the client wants, so.
There are a couple of constraints that are being put on us by FAA. One is that they really want the AWAS moved, which from its current location, which right now is-
Little red.
-over here.
Yep.
You're not supposed to have any buildings within a 500-foot radius of that AWAS, otherwise it doesn't-
It's not accurate.
It's not good accurate whether reading. So we want to move that, we're working on with MINDOT to figure out where, it's probably maybe somewhere over here. Maybe it'll be over here, we haven't figured that out with them, but they're going to work on that with us. The other piece that we have to keep in mind is that FAA has basically told us, we're not going to give you any more money for anything revenue generating until you get the apron fixed.
Right.
So to me, that sounds like next year would be better for-
No, and I understand that part, but we've been contacted before about an individual who would pay for his own hangar.
Yes.
When can he drive a stake in it or start building? That's my question.
And we can, we can get that answered for you, because all these are kind of moving parts, and they kind of say-
They all have to fit together.
Yeah, start with, let's abandon the runway, and then if that goes through, you know, what we're doing tonight, then we can start talking about those things, so we can get that answer for you. Because I think, you know, FAA is pretty good to work, you know, they're good to work with, they want to help the airport grow, so they're not trying to, there's just things that are out of compliance that we've got to get corrected, and, but I think if we had a plan on how we wanted to proceed-
Optimistically, if Mr. X wants to build a hangar, we could tell him next spring.
I think that would be probably realistic.
We're working with FAA and MINDOT now-
Yep.
-with this layout to get to something that they can get behind, so that we-
Because they still have to approve the master plan and everything else, so.
Yeah, and they're willing to do this ahead of the finish of the master plan.
As long as it fits the other steps in between. Yep, okay.
Yeah, we're skipping ahead a little, but that's, they're okay with that, as long as we're through them.
And the interest in private hangars has actually risen, there's the three that are interested in private hangars at this point, so.
Yeah, they don't want to see that go away either, you know, they want to work with this.
And that's one, but this is my question, is that you don't want that interest to wane by waiting?
Yes.
So-
Exactly.
And that's encouraging to see that that was a possibility, so. Answer my questions.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, I believe we need a motion to close runway 0624. Is that the right one?
Resolution-
I'd make a motion to approve resolution-
Oh, the resolution.
-2019-30.
I'll second that.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries to approve resolution 2019-30, closure of runway 0624 at the Tracy Municipal Airport. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll, can you get a motion to allow them to go out to bid for the apron project? That you already approved the apron project's design and-
And that'll be contingent on FAA approval as well, so.
I'll make the motion to let them, allow them to get bids.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And just to clarify on that, that's going to be a 90-10 or an 80-20?
It's a 95-5, so the city's responsibility is 5%, and we're right around that $400,000 mark, so that was close to what we had originally estimated, so.
Oh, as part of that, we'll be taking care of some obstructions at the end of-
And there's a, yeah, we're working on the XL power poles at the end of the runway, so we hope to get that done this summer, too.
We're going to wrap that into the project.
Yep.
Although, these are safety issues that are kind of getting done at the same time, so that's good.
Sounds like several birds with one stone here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, department head reports.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to skip ahead to 10B and 10C in the interest of those people driving long distance after this meeting?
Absolutely.
Would that be okay?
Sure, you bet. We'll start with Mr. Hagan.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates, your municipal advisor. We've got a couple of bonds here, some bids that came in on two bond issues today. I was here last month, and we did a pre-sale report, and you allowed us to go get bids on these bonds. So we've got a Series A bond, and a Series B bond. I have sale day reports for your viewing pleasure, kind of cuts to the chase, it's a nice outline of how things panned out today. There's also been a resolution for each one of these, prepared by your bond attorney from Kennedy and Graven, that would be the action you'd take if you like what you see here, so. So we can kind of get started on the Series A bonds or the temporary bonds, those are ahead of USDA loan, that's probably about three years out, according to our engineer. These are pretty big projects, if you remember, you're talking about 21 or so million dollars of project here, and these are actually the loan components of that, so the rest of it's grants, so, yeah, congratulations on the grant, that's great. So the $8,395,000 temporary bonds, okay, we took bids up until 10:30 this morning, then before that, we got the bonds rated, and it was nice to have Shane and Chris on the phone with us, it lasted an hour or so, and we did our due diligence on the offering circular and all that, too, the, what's in front of these broker dealers today to bid off the bonds, we did a, everybody did a nice job of getting this together, it was a great team effort, and appreciate their knowledge, and filling in the gaps on what standard and pores, the rating agency didn't see, you know, by the numbers, so it was, it was just nice to see. And then we didn't get any phone calls, you know, nobody had any questions, so it was just roll the dice and see what we get today. So we got four bids, it's from the same folks, on the A bonds and the B bonds, but they're just a little bit different, who bought them. So the A bonds, if you take a look at that, again, we got the standard and pores, A, stable outlook rating for the city of Tracy, we got the AAA credit enhancement, the state guarantee on these, too, so they sold a really nice, high rating, got four bids. The best bid was from Hutchinson Shaki out of Chicago, Illinois. The second best bid was from UBS out of New York, and then Baird out of Milwaukee, and Northland Securities out of Minneapolis. So it was a nice mixture from sort of the Midwest and then out east, too, and that's because of that high rating that we've got, so we reached out pretty far, which was nice. I always offer these locally, too, but these are pretty big bond issues to, for any bank to buy, so these usually go out into the market and then get resold, so that we've got here. So we had 1.922% true interest cost on the best bid there, went then, went down, went up to two, and then 2.1, and then 2.3, so there's a nice kind of spread in the interest rates there. Two difference between the low bid and the high bid was almost $100,000, so it's good to go out for bids, see what you get, not just negotiate with one that you think is going to be the best. And so, so from our pre-sale report, when I was here last month, the interest rate actually that we had was about 31 basis points higher, our estimate, so, or 0.31% in an interest rate, then came down lower today than what we had then, so that was, that was nice. The market keeps improving, you know, every day. There's a graph that's attached to the last page here, shows where the 30-year market is, and you're striking while the iron's nice and hot or lower, whatever you want to call that. Because of that lower interest rate, then the less capitalized interest needed to go into the bond issue, the discount, which is what the underwriters charge to reoffer these bonds, the public went, went down, the cost of issuance went down, so we're like $95,000 in those types of costs lower, so we're just putting that into the project fund, so we've got more to spend on the project. The closing date's May 15th, so it's all, money gets all wired to the city, and I guess we, we would recommend working with Chris and Shane on, on giving this sort of invested with, an investment advisor, whether it's our firm, Ellers Investment Partners, or someone that can kind of also talk with an arbitrage department on this, too, because this is such a big bond issue with such a slow draw, right? So we want those, those two entities to kind of talk to each other, make sure we can maximize the interest earnings, too, on the other side of this, then, to offset the interest rate, you know, during that construction period, and keep everybody good and happy about, about that. So arbitrage is really just making money on the borrowed money, right? So you take this money, tax-exempt money, and then the feds just don't want you to make too much on it, right, because it's sort of subsidized, right, because it's tax-exempt, and we're just, you know, with, with those folks working together, you'll get the highest, you know, investment earnings you can off of this before it gets actually spent on the project, so. That's something Chris and I will be working on, too. And so, if, so actually, the average rate on the A bonds, if you just want to put it into common terms, it came out to be 1.75% over the three-year period, so that's pretty cheap money, you know? So we should be able to invest that a little higher than that as we go through the construction period. So we're really happy of getting all those bids. The rating report came in really nice, you know, there's not much we can do about the economy, where a city's located, it is what it is. Debt, we have to issue bonds and do what we need to do to fix our streets and utilities, and that just happens. Uh, debt, uh, we have to issue bonds and do what we need to do to fix our streets and utilities, and that just happens. Um, you got a nice grants on this project and, and you did your homework on that, so you do have to take out a loan, you know, for this as well, and I think the next step too is, um, just to kind of offset some of that stuff is to work on some of that financial management planning we've been talking about, and we'll talk to staff about that and get that going, and just make sure we can pay these off in kind of a nice, uh, nice way, and it's not such a, such a difficult process too, so we'll be working on some of that too, hopefully. Uh, in the meantime, if you pick Ellers for that. Um, so that's the, the A bond, and the B bond, um, is the long term, it's a little over twenty years. It's five million, three hundred sixty-five thousand. It's really to finance the ineligible costs of phase three that USDA won't fund, or that grants won't fund either. Um, that also had the A, uh, underlying rating and the triple A guarantee on that. Uh, we got four bids and they're from the same folks, except Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, was the low bidder on that one at two point nine five percent, and, and that's really what the average interest rate is, two point nine five percent, and that's pretty, again, cheap money for probably twenty-two or twenty-three years. You know, we'll all take that, you know, if we could get that mortgage rate, right? But that's long gone for us all now. And that one, because of that interest rate, went down on that too, we had ninety-one thousand and some change then that we're going to put towards the project cost on that too. This is a large bond issue. It's going to close on the same day as, as the A bonds, um, again, we're able to combine the yield on both of those, so we can bring up the temporary bond yield, and, and this one will come down a little bit, and what that does is benefit us from that, uh, investment earning cap that we can make too, so we'll be able to make a little bit more money for the A bond, you know, than the B bond, so that'll work out nicely as well. So Baird, again, you look at the bid tabulation, so Baird was the best bid, um, and they had twenty-six syndicates that came along with them. You can look at that bid, you recognize some of those other folks that go along with them, Ed Jones, you know, and Doherty, and some of those places, RBC, it recognized out of there, so it's not just Baird, it's twenty-six others that went along with them and sharpened their pencils and got you that, that interest rate. And then Hutchinson-Shaki out of Chicago, US, UBS out of New York, New York, and Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, so. Um, same players, just kind of, kind of have interest in different types of bond issues, some like the shorter ones and some like the longer ones, so really happy that we have participation from four bids. You know, we see between probably, um, bond issues of this size, a city of your size rated the way it is, probably between two and five bids or something like that, so you're right in the wheelhouse with the four, so. Uh, and that one came, that one is down actually thirty-eight basis points, or point three eight percent lower than the pre-sale on that too, so that's why we were able to kind of put a little bit more money away for the project. Uh, that's all I've got. If you have any questions for me, um, told Chris I'd be kind of shortened, shortened to the point here and, um, kind of get to the, the meat of this for you guys. Any questions at all? Um, again, appreciate the business on this and, um, and these are, again, nice low interest rates that we were seeing in the market, so it's a good time to, to bond if you have to, so.
Anybody got any questions? Okay, we'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty-eight.
So move.
And, can we do them both at once?
Separate.
Yeah, they are separate.
They are separate, all right. So we have a first, we get a second. We have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, motion carries to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight, awarding the sale of GO-TAM bonds, series twenty nineteen A, at eight million, three hundred ninety-five thousand. Well, next we'll need a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine, awarding the sale of GO bond series twenty nineteen B at five million, three hundred sixty-five thousand.
So move.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine, awarding the sale of GO bond series twenty nineteen B for five million, three hundred sixty-five thousand.
Thanks again, appreciate it, and we will keep tabs on these as we move along throughout the project, so.
Appreciate it. Comment if I can, he put a lot of work into this, and he made it a very simple process, so I want to say thank you and, from my bosses, so, thanks for, thanks for doing that, it was.
Yes, thank you very much, we appreciate your efforts.
Their job, thanks a lot, appreciate it. We're here to make you all look good, so, keep you out of harms way.
Good luck.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, that's a tall order. Okay, so next would be Chris Larson.
Well, thanks for, uh, moving me up in, on the agenda as well. Um, we opened bids for phase three A on Thursday. Um, there were four bidders. Dunick was low again, they did the phase one project as well as the, um, Fourth and Morgan Street project out here a few years ago. Um, their bid came in at five point seven million, um, the exact number is five million, seven hundred six thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and thirteen cents. Um, this was over our estimate of five point one million, um, when we broke it down. Uh, there's about six to seven hundred thousand dollars of, um, cost higher than our estimate on all the items related to concrete, um, so that was kind of interesting, and talking with some other contractors and suppliers, those prices have, have been going up. Part of it is, um, there's a shortage of labor we heard today from someone else that bid on it that, uh, we had a meeting with about another project, so, um, this is the first of a few phases, so, I mean, there is money available to cover that, um, and as we get to the end, the, um, the last phase, you know, if we're still like, we're running over, we might just need to truncate that last phase of this package, um, if we're running over. But we feel that they are, um, good numbers, um, it's just they were higher than we were expecting. We used, for our estimate, we used the prices we got on phase one, and I shouldn't even say the prices we, we got on phase one, we used kind of an average of all the bids that we received on phase one, bumped them up a little bit, and then this still came back, um, a little higher, but, um, we, we don't think there'd be any advantage to rebidding it or anything, and it's a good thing that we split it up over two years, we kind of heard that if we had still tried to make them do it all in one year, then we, they really would have been through the rough, so. Kind of, it, it is what it is as far as what the numbers are, that that's what the bidding market is right now. Contractors are, you know, there, there's a lot of work out there, so they can, um, be a little more selective and, um, you know, get as low a price as when that happens, so. Uh, it sounds like they, they will probably start in July, they have a couple of things, carryover projects from last year, um, so if it's awarded, um, they'll, the, weather dependent, of course, but, um, they try to start in July, do as much as they can this year and, and do the rest next year.
So they're going to do this in sections, yeah?
Yeah, so the way the, uh, the bidding documents read is basically whatever they rip up this year, they have to have back to pavement before this winter. So if they decide to take five blocks this year, those five blocks have to be back to pavement before winter.
Okay, do we have any idea what that might be?
What, what, how many blocks are going to?
Yeah, what they.
We haven't heard yet, I mean, once we get it awarded and everything, there'll be a pre-construction meeting, we'll get a preliminary schedule from them, and, um, just.
Okay.
In passing, they said we're going to do what we can this year, but they know they won't be able to do it all this year. They're not planning on it, yep.
I just, you know, for folks at home that are going to be affected by this.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to give them an idea of, you know, when their street's going to be tore up and, you know, what they're going to have to, what kind of an impact it's going to have on them.
Yep, yep.
They'll do your newsletters and everything.
Exactly, yep, we'll do the newsletter. Once we have more information from the contractor, we'll definitely get that out, and then.
Okay.
When it changes the next day, we'll try.
Send out another.
Right.
Send out another, yeah.
So I, obviously, um, we feel like we've had pretty good luck with Dunick the last couple of years, so, um, we're, we're pleased that, that they were the little bidder. So I guess, um, we would recommend, um, similar, similar to what you had to do for the airport, uh, award of the contract contingent upon approval from USDA, we have to turn in the bidding documents and everything, and they have to review it, so, um, instead of having to wait, because I think your next meeting is three weeks from tonight, because there's five Mondays in April, um, get your approval tonight, and then if USDA is good with it, we can get it formally awarded.
Okay, so, we need a resolution then to approve contingent on RD approval?
Yeah, it could just be a motion at this point.
A motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do a resolution at some point, but, yeah.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to go ahead and, and accept the Dunick bid at five point seven million, contingent upon the RD's approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a first and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries for approval contingent on RD's approval.
Um, real quick while I'm here, um, Reiner plans to start on finishing up the ponds, um, mid-May, they're hoping for the first week of May, but depends on when road restrictions come off and so forth, but they'll attack those right away, and then Dunick has just a little bit of work to do now that all the private services were completed last fall, they have some stuff to wrap up this spring on phase one, should be able to get those closed out, so. Thank you.
Uh, just as a guess, Chris, when are we looking at going up for bids for the decommissioning?
We're going to, um, uh, once the old ponds are taken offline and they're drained, we'll be able to get a better look at that sludge and what else has been flushed over fifty years, and then I'll, uh, we're going to get someone with the MPCA out here to take a look, and it's kind of dependent on that, what our options are going to be. So, probably, um, probably this winter, I would guess, and then we'll try to be more flexible with, um, the timeline on that to leave some option, if it can be land applied, we don't want it to say it needs to be done by, you know, four months after the bid.
The reason I asked was the bids were so high when we.
Yeah, and that was part of it, there's a lot of unknowns, because, you know, farmers don't want to say, yeah, you can spread that on my land without knowing.
What's.
What's going to be.
What it is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, or it'd be good to get a good visual on it, yep.
All right, thank you.
Each council member has to check a sample.
Okay, so that brings us now back to, um, department head reports. Anybody want to jump first, feeling froggy?
I'm Tamara from the Tracy Liquor Store. Um, Tracy Liquor Store has, was represented at the Women's Expo Saturday the thirteenth. Um, it was, um, I don't think it was as busy as it was last year, but, I mean, just for the publicity of us being there and helping out some of the vendors that we have at our store, was the main purpose in that. Um, sales for March of nineteen, um, last year versus this year were up like fifty-one hundred dollars. And in April, we are up from, from the first to the twentieth of nineteen, or two thousand eighteen versus nineteen, we are up about thirteen thousand so far this month. Um, liquor convention is, starts on Saturday and goes to next Tuesday. Um, I'm going to go from Sunday and, for Sunday and Monday. Um, we are doing a wine tasting seminar, not tasting, but a wine information seminar. Saint Michelle's, um, the company Saint Michelle's is going to send a representative down to, to do the program, and that's on May eighth. Um, May fifth, we have a liquor training, um, for all of our employees, and we're excited about the work on our new building, our new store coming, so, if anybody has any questions or comments, definitely don't hesitate to let me know. Any questions, you guys? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Val, how are you?
I'm doing very well, thanks. Um, we had our organizational, um, meeting for the library board in April and elected new officers, which you can see there. Um, we're able to pick up some new bookshelves that Marshall Line County is selling, I'm very excited about that. We need some shelving, I knew it kind of wasn't in the budget, but we're able to pick these up for a hundred and seventy-five dollars and they're solid wood, um, made by local carpenters, so that's wonderful. Um, some information on programs there, um, we have three programs this week, and, um, also, um, our card catalog was down for a couple days during the ice storm. Um, we opted to be closed on Thursday, but we were open on Friday and did things the old-fashioned way and wrote them down, so. I think it went fairly smoothly, people were very patient with us, and we appreciate that, so. We're all caught back up and things are going well. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Val.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, how are you tonight?
Lovely. Any questions about the, the report that I submitted? We had two applicants come in on Thursday and did job testing, and, uh, the police commission felt that neither one of them would be a very good fit for us, we'll be notifying them that, uh, we're going to be starting over again, so.
Sure, it's going to be a little tough on you, but I appreciate you not just hiring and building stocks, that we look at the right people.
Yes. That's important, we need the right fit here in town, and.
We'll just throw more on you and what you do have for officers, so.
Yeah.
We'll give you a chance.
Other questions?
Got any questions for?
Yeah, appreciate all your hard work during the storm, there's a lot of hours put in, and I even remember one point where the dispatch was told to let him sleep for a little bit, because he had been out all night, all day, all night before. I mean, and that goes to Public Works and the Fire Department too, but, you know, you're the first one out.
I was all in.
It, uh.
Yep.
I, you know, I know these guys don't, that doesn't go past them, they know it, they see it, and the public has commented a lot to me about the work you guys have done, so.
And it is a group effort between all three departments, so.
Yeah, but it's, it's been noted, so I just wanted to pass that on in front of these guys, so.
Yep, your department's doing outstanding job, and, and you're constantly under the gun, because, especially lately with weather events and things that have been going on, outstanding performance from everyone involved in supporting Tracy, and, and we're not the only ones that see it, people around us see it too, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so.
Uh, Fire Chief won't be in tonight, he's got a regional meeting.
Okay.
If you had any questions, you could either get directly with him, or, or you could be right to me if you had anything.
All right.
They've had a busy month too.
Yep, they have. Uh, Jeff, do you want to?
Sure. A lot of my time this past, uh, month's been spent with housing. The, uh, open house that we had produced, uh, well over fifty people that were here. Talking about broad acres and some of the in, inner lots here in Tracy, and coming out of that, I believe, I believe by the end of the year that we will have three townhomes, twin homes that'll be put up, which essentially is, uh, six new, uh, free, or, uh, six new standing houses. And we were looking at a goal of trying to get to eventually of ten per year, that's a good start of having six of them. I just got, uh, later, earlier this afternoon, I didn't get this to anybody, because I just got it, but we got a commitment that we were signing on, that's what's going to be the first one out there, that'll be the color, the bricks, everything will be out there. So, that is commitment, um, both sides are, uh, committed upon, and then there's actually another one that we were pretty confident that was, we were hoping was going to go out there, but is going to actually be building in a different place here in town, which I don't care. So that'll be the three of them, so there'll be, again. So that'll be the three of them, so there'll be, again, six new houses here in town this year, I believe, if not more.
So those are like townhomes?
Twin homes, townhomes, however you want to call it, yep. Yep, yep, both sides.
Multi-family?
Yep. Well, not even, I can't really call it multi-family, I don't know, with the one on each side separating the wall, but, you know, that, uh, broad acres will, hopefully with having one of them put up there, will spawn into a second one out there, which I'm pretty confident with and then, you know, and then we can either do it at the end of this year or next year, start filling up the rest of it out there before we move on to another place. So that's, uh, taken up a, a lot of time with EDA meetings, the open houses and that type of thing, so. Um, I guess, any, any questions?
Thank you much. Yeah, you guys, you too, I, I, everybody has been doing a, a great job and I think we're, it's very encouraging, we're moving forward here and things look really well. And it's due to everyone's hard work and collaboration, so thank you, Jeff. Shane, you want to go next?
Certainly. Um, first I will answer any questions you may have on my report. Um, I do have some additions that happened since Thursday. Um, can go over those. Gas company, I talked to them Friday, I know some of these alleys are in pretty tough shape, uh, mostly because they came through last year and made a mess of everything. They are wanting me to compile a list of all the spots, which is pretty much everything they touched, but, um, I'm just going to make a map and pass that along and the contractor that was in town last year, they're going to require them to come back and fix them all. You know, some of them we fix, I call them the car swallows, but, um, even the little potholes and stuff that they come back and fix on their dime, so. Uh, just wanted to give you an update on that. We had a water main break today, um, good day for it, I guess. Out on Forest Street East, ended up being in a hydrant leg, um, ground shifting is a shallower main. I'm thinking frost had a little bit of something to do with that one, but, um, the main looked like it was in decent condition yet, so. Um, that and we had thought we had a hole in our sanitary sewer on Friday, um, because there's a sinkhole in the road. Ended up being a county tile, um, halfway between the road surface and the sanitary, um, so had to call the county down here and obviously we ended up fixing it, but, um, that happened on Front Street and Main. And then also on Friday, um, which we were going to fix today, but water main breaks take precedence, um, there's a, another hole on East Morgan and First East, that's a storm sewer. Um, it's probably the sixth time we've fixed that main, um, so hopefully the next few years we can get that in a street project, but, um, just 100, or 1908 main, so it's over 100 years old and it's, uh, clay tile and it's not round anymore, so. So just something to just keep putting Band-Aids on and making it last a few more years, so.
Is that part of what will be replaced in this? When, when is that scheduled?
Um, it'll end up being in C or D.
No, is it that early?
Whatever the black was. Anyway, Center Street has to be done first in order to get the fall, because they're so shallow in that area, um, with the sanitary even, uh, I think on Elm sanitary is three feet in the ground. So what they're going to do is, um, do center first and make it deeper like they did on Phase One, um, connect into that new main, make that whole Center Street all the way down to, like, pretty much ambulance garage, um, and then it cuts over into the boulevard. But to that point, for sure, um, they're going to make, I want to say it's five, six foot deeper, um, and then they'll, they'll make everything deeper on the, the side streets from there, but they need to get that branch in to get everything.
We were waiting on the county to, when they're going to do that stretch before we start.
Sounded like 2021 or 2022 is kind of what they're thinking, um, and when it's plowed snow, uh, we ended up in First Street East, took some of the pavement off there, so, and that road's in pretty tough shape too, so, uh, it'd be nice to see that part done. It's probably the worst part of town, um, currently, um, but it's not the worst sewer, so it's kind of, kind of one of those, you know, where do you go next type things, but that's what we've been working on. Um, we're hoping to get some trees picked up hopefully tomorrow. Um, I got two, two groups, uh, one was actually supposed to be today, but it rained, um, they're wanting to volunteer time to help clean up some of the parks and stuff. Um, one canceled because of the rain, one called during, while we were fixing the water main break, have to call them back, um, they're looking at Saturday, um, they'd have some time picking up some sticks too, so, um, hopefully we can get some collaboration with them to get some of this stuff picked up, because I think every park that we have has some average to large limbs and along with our cemeteries, so it's in pretty tough shape too, so.
So when you say picking up sticks, branches, trees, whatever, I've had a lot of public question if, you know, they don't have resources to get their branches and that, you know, hauled anywhere. Is the city considering, I know you've got a lot of stuff, obviously, water mains, I mean, things that have been popping up here, is the city ever going to consider maybe helping out some of the, the people pick up their branches and get them hauled away?
That's, uh, not a decision for me to make, um, I'd be up to the council, I think, but.
Logistically, it's, what, if, if you're asking, are we going to pick up all the branches in town, logistically we don't have the manpower or the equipment to do it. Uh, what the city is responsible for is anything in the middle of the boulevard out. Um, uh, for example, if there's a tree in the boulevard and it, the section falls out into the street, we're responsible for it. As far as, um, and I'm just going to go back into the history, I wasn't here, but it was told once, they said, "Yep, we're going to come out and pick these out," and everybody trimmed every tree in their yard and brought every branch in their yard and cleaned up every pile that they had in their yard and, and it was a logistical nightmare for the city. So there are some and, uh, we, we have a map that we went around and said, "Hey, these, this is our responsibility and we'll be taking care of this. If you want anything more than that, um, then what is our responsibility?" That's, it could be a council decision, you could tell us that and, uh, my recommendation back would maybe be that we would sublet some of that out, maybe contract it or something like that. And I, I don't know where you draw that distinction of, do we help this homeowner, but not this homeowner? And, and that's a, it's a tough decision that has to be made in, in these kinds of meetings because of that, so, um, I guess I'll send that back to you guys.
As a suggestion, I would wait before we go any further until we get what, what we're responsible for up and out of there and then you can see what's left. And I've, I've done it in the past, I'll swing by it, find a pile that's still sitting there, I, I'll bring it out myself. I mean, there's other people in town that drive around with the trucks that could, if they want to, they can, I'm not telling anybody to do it, but there's, there's good neighbors out there, so we can, the stuff can get there where it needs to go without spending the money or overloading overloaded workforce.
We're pretty much down to three guys when you get all this other stuff happening. Um, it's all going to have to be hand loaded because those little sticks, we don't have anything to pick that up mechanically. Um, you know, we have, I mean, if it's a log, yeah, we can pick that up with our big grapple, which is what we use at the dump and that, but.
So how would people find out if they're on your map? You know, I mean, would they?
It's pretty much, what's on our map is the stuff that we pushed into their yard to get off the roadway.
So like if they had a tree that, a branch that fell on their, their roof or, in their yard, that is their responsibility? We would not be picking those up.
One, because it's a liability, um, two, we don't have anything that'll go in there without wrecking, wrecking their yard.
I guess I was thinking if people had things brought to the boulevard, but then I don't know how you, lack of a better word, police people that, the branches that they're bringing, our branches that fell because of the storm and they're bringing it to the boulevard for ease of, even if Tony was going to go by, I mean, a volunteer to go by, I don't know how you police.
That's something we could do too, is call for volunteers and, you know, appeal to the residents of Tracy and say, "Look, if you have a vehicle or you have a trailer, you have the means, if you could help out your neighbors or, you know, grab that stuff." I, I think if we came together as a community, we should be able to, uh, to handle that pretty readily, I would think.
And that may be something we could roll in a little bit with cleanup day too. If people are, if there's people that have no way to get rid of the sticks, we've got cleanup day going on, there'll be people with trailers and hauling furniture down town and then if, if they want to, they could swing by somebody's place that needs sticks picked up and if there's, if there's people that maybe have a need for it, that they can't do it themselves, I don't know, they could maybe call down to the city and.
Or the church or, you know.
Yeah, get in touch with somebody and say, "Hey, if somebody can pick up these sticks, it'd be great," or.
Especially I've noticed a lot of folks have gathered them up and put them out on the boulevard or whatever and, you know, I have a pickup truck and I have a trailer as well, so, you know, you're driving by and there's a pile of sticks there, throw it on board, drag it over there, you know.
And we do have the, the tree dump available for people to drop the stuff off at. They burned it off and, and got it back down to manageable.
How's that road going out there, is that, is that improved any?
Soft, there's a lot of frost boils in it yet, but, I mean, I don't know, I could make it down there with my car, but I don't think I'd try it, but pickups, we haven't had anybody stuck yet.
Okay. I'd heard that it was pretty rough going, so.
What's that?
I had heard it was pretty rough going there for a while.
So, and to put it in perspective too, in 97 ice storm that we had, we had two more people than we have now, so our workforce has decreased since then, but we actually had a guy pull a tree from his backyard, it was about eight inches around, and drug it through the snow and put it in the middle of the street as we were plowing snow. I mean, that one we donated back, uh, to their boulevard.
It wasn't me, I, I remember saying it though.
I mean, it's, I mean, just during the storm, you know, we're trying to get the roads clear and you get people like that pushing in the road, it's.
It's a tough, it's, it's a tough thing to even get into because of the fact that, I mean, we have lawnmowers, we can mow every yard in town too, but it, you just.
So they do go there.
So it's, we, he's got, you know, they've got the map developed, they're going to get out and get the stuff that is our responsibility as we deem it and if somebody feels that something didn't get picked up and it isn't, they're welcome to call my office and, and, you know, not to say we couldn't make a mistake, but, uh, you know, some of it is just playing the homeowner's responsibility and we have to leave it there.
So if we were trying to correlate something or coordinate it with the cleanup day, how would people know if they came down there that's, you know, resident of XYZ, you know, has some branches that they need someone to pick up? I mean, how would we even coordinate?
Would it be an undue burden to the, to the office to have them call in and?
I think they could call and leave their name and address or they could write it on a slip of paper and drop it off. We do have some volunteers already that are starting to congregate for the cleanup day that have offered some things and we can say it now, we'll, we'll take additional volunteers if the, if they're willing to help, you know, somebody with a pickup truck or something. And we could get a list together that day and the tree dump will be open that day as, as it is any other day and we can try and help orchestrate that. I think that that is a cost savings measure to try and help, help out where we can.
And the office, the office girls would be okay with kind of collecting the names and the numbers?
I'll ask them, yep, they're fine with it.
Thanks, girls.
Nice.
Coordinating is a lot less expensive than.
Than doing it.
Picking it up and hauling it, so.
I just like at least there being an option for people.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of the elderly, you know, if they don't have family around here or anything, I mean, sometimes they don't have people to call.
Yeah, and we want, we want to, we want to help, it's not a matter of that we don't want to, it's just that we have to, we have to be fair and unbiased with it.
And as far as that goes, if anybody, you know, watching at home or, you know, you just word of mouth talking to neighbors and other community folks, if you have the time and the means to volunteer, call the office and let us know, you know, and so, because then we can not only coordinate or try and coordinate some of this stuff getting picked up, but then we can also have a better handle on the personnel available to do that. So, you know, i- if anybody has the opportunity or the means to help out, please do. Let us know.
Um, not to drag this out, but, um, just a reminder for everyone dumping at the compost site, just make sure that the leaves go in the leaf pile, sticks go in the stick pile. Um, it's two completely different permits that we have for the facility, one's for DNR for sticks and one's for, uh, MPCA for lawn waste. Um, and then also when you're dumping sticks and that, try to keep it as close to the pile as possible. A lot of them dump in the middle of the road, well then you get 17 people behind that person that gets to be a mess, so, uh, plugs up in a hurry, so just, uh, try to help us out the best you can there with the, we got quite a quantity going into the compost site right now, so. That's all I have.
I got one question for you.
Sure.
Your water meters, you said you're hopefully going to be down to the single digits?
Yep.
Have we, all, has everybody contacted the city about it?
There's a couple holdouts.
Yeah.
One that flat out said they are not going to change their water meter and they, there was a comment said about 500, nothing, I don't care, so.
But for the most part, well, but when we shut off their water, they'll sing it out.
That's why we set it up that way, so it'll.
But we're making, we're obviously making progress down the list and it's.
Yep, excessively, it's going very, very well and we'll get to a point where they'll all be replaced and the, and anybody that's not willing to do it for whatever reason will then shut that water off and then it, it won't matter at that point. So if they're not using water and that's their reasoning, then that's fine because our route will now go to 100% radio red at that time because once the water's shut off, we're not, we don't have to worry about it.
Is there any accommodation made for the families where both members are working, eight to five old, I mean, is there, is there a possibility of, I know Al's usually the one puts the meters in, on his weekend call, if he could put a meter in or, I mean, they're out checking.
It's possible, yeah, um, if that's the only time that we can get in there, or he'll, he'll start early or whatever too.
On average, how long does it take to?
Depends on, you know, if you have a crusty old valve and a curb stop that don't work, you know, it takes a while.
Yeah.
If it's, uh, a good valve and all the fittings, you can do it in 10 minutes, I mean, it's just a matter of.
Ten minutes to two days.
Right, no, I understand that, you know, there, there are certain challenges, but I was just kind of trying to get a ballpark for folks to approximate.
Yeah, and I've.
Barring any kind of serious.
If it looks, if it's above his head, you know, I'll come in and help him, you know, knock it out quicker, best we can, um, but.
But if somebody plans for a half hour of their day, it's more than likely going to be done.
Yeah.
And we haven't had anybody request out of hours' time, so it's been, it's, people have been very accommodating with it and stuff and a lot of them, you know, they just, it, it took it serious now and, and it's been very nice.
And we appreciate their cooperation.
I have gotten some feedback from some of the residents with the letters that they thought it was kind of a push, I mean, they were, a softer reminder would have been, because they're under the impression that we were doing this in phases and they'd be notified when they were up for phases and it, it went from the leakers to the industrial, the phase was kind of haphazard, it wasn't a neighborhood thing and then all of a sudden they're getting a letter in the mail, they felt a little frustrated with us.
I heard the word aggressive.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'll admit, uh, it was purposely aggressive. The letters have been since 2016, they've been on the bottom of the water bills multiple times and sometimes people just need to see a number that looks scary and everybody's been great when they've called in and, and we've set up times and, and they've got a new meter and it was no cost to them and it's been doing very well, so.
This program's been going on for 10 years, hasn't it? So I don't know how much softer we can get. Jake, Chris, thank you. Jake, Chris, thank you.
Um, a lot of, a lot of meetings going on, so a lot of stuff with FEMA, Tracy Active Living Council, FAA meetings, that kind of led into the airport stuff tonight. Department heads, planning commission, EDA, we had an arbitrage management meeting that went over with the auditors to discuss. We've got a couple entities that want to handle our arbitrage requirements for the bonds. So I'm researching to see which is gonna be the best moving forward on that. They also wanna look into some financial management planning and looking into some of that as well. Some pre-bid stuff as Chris discussed before he was here. We had, we did have for our bond rating and stuff, we did have an S and P rating conference call that turned into, we got our AAA rating again this year. That's good. That's, that's why we got such a low bond rate, so that was great. Ambassador was here from the League of Minnesota Cities, comes around quarterly if not, if not sooner. I did meet with the Chamber. We had a kind of a Chamber City Relations meeting and that was really good. A lot of good stuff came out of that. And then I went to that TDC investor meeting after that, which was, that was a really cool thing that I think they got a lot of draw with and that, that's, it's great to see something like that happening outside of the city. You know, you know, there are certain things the city can do, certain things TDC can do and that's the, they got a lot of traction, they're doing well. We had our bid openings. Fida property, or I'm sorry, the PDM from FEMA was here last Thursday. Ironed out a couple issues from our program delivery manager before and some stuff got lost in the shuffle. Kicked and screamed a little and it's all fixed now. So that went well. Airport Commission meeting and that was, their recommendation was moving forward to close that runway. So that was part of tonight. Upcoming, we got our bond stuffs on schedule as you see tonight, so those should be awarded. The plan is to look into the investments. I got a 4M, which is the League of Minnesota Cities Funds for Investments, meeting on Thursday. I'll be going over that. I would say preliminarily that we'll look to invest with Ellers again because of the rate that we're getting and the uniformity of keeping all our bonds with one investment. That makes a lot of sense for financial planning moving forward. We touched on that, water meter changeover is going well. I agree. I do think that it would have been nice to maybe send another letter. It wasn't part of the history of letters, but also the job is getting done. So, I apologize if anybody was offended by the letter, but thank you for their participation. We should start seeing some FEMA payments coming in. They're on the closeout of everything, they'll be closing the Worthington office in May. That's kind of some of the final steps of that. And all of our stuff has been pushed into multiple review steps and we should actually see the money coming in, which they say anything between nine months, nine to 12 months, we've seen the funds come in after a disaster is pretty typical and we're right in that window. So it's going very well. And some upcoming items, we have some stuff about airport expansion things coming up. Ellers bond review after we get, after those bonds get sold. And then we have our Board of Equalization meeting tomorrow night. I'll be in training tomorrow with the League of Minnesota Cities for loss control, but I'll be back for that meeting. So, if you have any questions, other than that, it's just meeting after meeting.
Don't we have any active forum fund accounts now?
We have one, yes.
I thought we did.
And that was a, an account that it was not due, we couldn't pull out of it yet and it got renewed automatically for five years. We have a State Farm account too that's the same way. It's, it wasn't set up as a diversification as people might think it was. It was, those funds got left in those through the changeover and administration. Typically, you like to keep your fund with one manager. So eventually, we would probably see those roll into Ellers or if we change managers at that time.
It's always my responsibility to say that to you.
Yeah, they make me sick.
Anybody have any other questions? I'm not missing anybody, right? We got, everybody had an opportunity. All right. Petition request, communication to waive special assessment, 173 Ninth Street.
Did you want to address the council at all or did you want me to?
You wanna go ahead?
Sure, I can, I can do it on your behalf or you're, you're welcome to come up, your choice. Okay. So we have a request to waive the special assessment that we have on the property located at 173 Ninth Street. It's in a, basically, I'd call it an abandoned home that during the flood was damaged and deemed unoccupable by the, both building inspection and the fire department due to some of the damages that were in it. The fees for that property and the lawn mowing fees and it, I think it was all, yeah, it's all lawn mowing, was assessed to it from the year 2017. The next door property owner, Jordi Anderson, who's here, mowed the property in 2018, so there was no more. She did that at her own expense. She's now interested in tearing down that house but would like to request those fees that were not her fees, she didn't own the property at that time, to be waived. I would just add to that, that if she's willing to do that, that's a cost savings for the city that we don't have to tear down that property in the future if we do an order to raise on that, if it continues to deteriorate and is to the point where it just sits and sits until that.
Is that the old blue one that burned?
Yeah, they had fired and it's been unoccupied since the fire.
I think this would be an actual cost savings measure for the city at this point to waive the special assessments and allow her to do the demolition.
Are the taxes up today?
Other than the 18s.
Yeah, there, there are some due for 19, right? Is it, yeah.
18.
18.
Payable 18. They paid the 19s, but the 18s are unpaid.
Okay. And we did talk about that, that's something that we wouldn't waive, we'd just waive the, what we've applied as a special assessment. And that is, like I said, for lawn mowing in 2017.
I have no problem waiving that assessment. I like the way the resolution wording was changed to, it's nothing derogatory, but to have a caveat in there on the way with the assessment for a completion date for the removal of the building, kind of as an insurance policy to the city. We've done it before on other properties and normally, everybody takes care of what they say they're gonna take care of, but if they don't, then the assessments go back on the property, so...
And when we visited, we discussed that and I explained that, that it was just, you know, it's a security for the city. Yep.
Are you hoping to build on that property?
I have no plans right now other than just clean it up.
And thank you for that.
So, I guess we'll need a motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, approve resolution 2019-26.
Second. First and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve resolution 2019-26 to waive assessments at 173 Ninth Street. So that leads us to resolution 2019-27, closing Fund 502 and transferring the balance to Fund 412.
So this was a recommendation from the auditors. We've got money in two, two different pots that is essentially the same money. And we want to move it from the GO bond, the GEO bond to the construction fund. And we need a resolution from the council to do that.
And that's just to consolidate the...
That's correction basically is what it is.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-27.
Second.
First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve resolution 2019-27, closing Fund 502 and transferring the balance to Fund 412. Okay, that moves to gambling permit, 2019-31 resolution.
So this is a gambling permit application for the Southwest Heroes Run. Chief, he's actually a member of that and he's here if you have any questions on it. They want to conduct a raffle at Bonnie and Clyde's on May 18th, similar to other gambling permits we've done in the past. It takes city approval. I'd ask that your motion, if you approve it, is acknowledged with no waiting period because of the time sensitivity. And if you approve it, then we'll ask the mayor to sign it tonight and get it back to him.
With the resolution, next meeting.
Approve the resolution, yeah.
I'd make a motion, approve resolution, was it 2019-31, gambling permit for Heroes Run.
Second that?
First and second, any discussion?
And you need to make a motion to waive the waiting period or the...
No, it's just that, that's how it'll be signed on there, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for approval of resolution 2019-31 gambling permit for the Heroes Run. Accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage and the municipal accounts receivable reports.
Second. First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion for breakthrough beverage. First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody have, Mayor and Council Communication, anybody have anything they want to add this evening?
I would just like to echo what Chris brought up, Jason's department, Shane's and the fire department for the work they've done. Whenever something happens, they're always in the middle of it. They handle it, their teamwork is exceptional and I appreciate it.
I agree with that as well. Anything else? Need a motion to close the meeting?
Arrangements.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned.